Good morning, everybody. Before we get going right here at 9:30, just to let you know there's microphones hitting the ceilings. They're pretty adept at picking up side conversations or you're talking on the phone. So we are also streaming this to YouTube. So that will be forever part of the Albany County Commission meeting. So just to let you know. I'd like to hold order the Commissioners' regular meeting for August 2nd, 2022. Thank you all for being here. Commissioner Iber, Commissioner Richardson here, Commissioner Gosman also here. Could you stand and join me with the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3, public hearings. We have two this morning. So I'd like to open up the Taylor zoning change application, LUC dash 06 dash 22. Is anybody in the room who would like to speak honor against the Taylor zoning change application? LUC dash 06 dash 22. How about online? You raise your hand or just unmute yourself online network. Last call for in the room or online for the Taylor zoning change application, LUC dash 06 dash 22. I should just entertain a motion to close that public hearing, please.
I move that we close the public hearing for the change application.
Second. Move to second, any further discussion? I'm seeing that all is in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, oh, same side. That motion carries. I'd like to open up the Brown Paw zoning change application, LUC dash 07 dash 22. Would anybody like to speak honor or against the Brown Paw zoning change application? LUC dash 07 dash 22. In the room? How about online? And last call for in the room or online. Commissioners entertain a motion to close that public hearing, please.
I move that we close the Brown Paw zoning change application, public hearing.
Second.
Move to second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say goodbye by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all is opposed, same side. That motion carries. Public hearings are finished. Item 4, comments from the public. Would anybody in the room like to make a public comment? How about online, please? Public comment? Commissioners entertain a motion to close the public comment, please.
I move that we close the public comment.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all is opposed, same side. That motion carries. Five disclosures, Commissioner Iber, any disclosures?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson, I have said, and I also have done. Six, considerations of changes on the agenda. Any changes to the agenda today?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Jackie, please, thank you.
There is a request from Christina Lewis, HR Director, asking that the HR contract for the library be canceled and placed on the agenda for action by the Board of County Commissioners, please.
Let's, is she going to be joining us or is that just something we can take care of at the end of the meeting?
It's something we can take care of.
Okay, can we put that at 32A? Anybody else have a change to the agenda? I would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we can, that we approve the consent as presented.
Second.
Move to second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say goodbye by saying aye, please. Aye, aye, all is opposed, same side. That motion carries. Regular agenda. Item 8, proclaim the week of August 1st as World Breastfeeding Week and recognize WIC staff for the Excellence League Board that they are receipt of. Christina, what this is more than yay. How about you guys? Thank you.
I'll introduce our staff here. Got Riley, who's our breastfeeding coordinator and nutritionist Jasmine, who's our breastfeeding peer counselor. And I believe who's our weight technician. And we all want to be here today because we're all part of the award. But Riley and Jasmine really put a lot of work into receiving this award and doing the application. So they are going to tell you a little bit about it.
Thank you.
Each year, the Food and Nutrition Service Special Supplemental Nutrition Program, or WIC, announces the WIC Breastfeeding Award of Excellence. This award was established to recognize local WIC agencies that have provided example, example of breastfeeding promotion and support activities. The award is given on three levels and we've won all three. So the first year we applied, we got the gold award. The next year, the premier, and then in 2021, the Elite Award. We were the only clinic in the whole country to win that award that, that year. Um, one of the key factors that distinguishes Albany County is our high breastfeeding rates. At the time of the application, 43% of the women on WIC were exclusively breastfeeding and so they were not taking any formula from WIC. Um, at that same time, we had 385 participants enrolled and 77 of those were working with Jasmine, our breastfeeding peer counselor. We are very fortunate to have strong partnerships with Public Health, the hospital, a lot of the pediatricians in town. And that's really why we won. I mean, our high breastfeeding rates qualified us for the award, but to get the Elite Award, we had to have strong community partnerships. And so we also would like to thank Public Health. Without that partnership, we would not have won that award. We're both, all of our staff are, are members of the Laramie Breastfeeding Coalition as well. And that's another factor to let's think of winning the award. And then Jasmine wanted to talk about anything we have going this week.
Yeah, so in our collaboration as the Laramie Breastfeeding Coalition, we're, um, we're always trying to normalize breastfeeding in the community as much as possible. So we have this really cool event coming up on August 5th. Um, it is called the Breastable and it's during World Breastfeeding Week to celebrate that. And, um, there's a lot of people that are, that have been helping with that. We have parents at school, teachers. Um, Ivanson Memorial Hospital, Laramie Physicians for Women Wellness, Aspen Family, Chiropractic Clinic, the lovely Dula, WIC Public Health, Laramie City Kitchen, Daylight Donut, Perkins. Oh, that's the library. And the public library. All are helping out with this event. So we can't thank them enough. But yeah, there's going to be a bounce house. There's going to be refreshments, games and activities for families. And it's August 5th from 10 to 12. A really fun event. At Washington Park.
Commissioners, any questions?
I want to acknowledge there being a little lot of, this award is recognized for two years, correct?
Three, well, oh, this, this, yeah.
Two years, this, this, yes. Well, it wasn't just last year, it was this year as well.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Christina.
All right, I am saying congratulations. The only clinic in the country, right? How cool is that? And I really do appreciate that's a healthcare provider with the community who understand the importance of breastfeeding and child health. And so thank you so much for the work that you guys do. And Breastable sounds like a blast. So it's in the draw on Friday at Washington Park. Make sure everybody knows that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Jackie, do we need a motion to sign the proclamation or can we just move on? Okay, thank you. Item, item nine, present for approval memorandum of understanding between the city of Laramie and Albany County for operational protocols relative to the Laramie-Albany County Bridge and Communication Center. Chief Stalter, good morning. What is yours?
This is a fairly simple matter, but it's lingered for the part of 25 years. I believe when I came into Lark in 1998, there were a number of, I would call it handshake agreements between the city and the county that dictated how a number of different things like utilities were paid for. One of those, one of those items was that since Lark resides in a county building, it always felt like the county was going to be responsible under your warment insurance, your property liability insurance. There was damage to Lark equipment. Just one example is a number of years ago, there was a flood upstairs that came down through the HVAC system and then it hit a bunch of computers down in the country. So those had to be replaced. Jackie and I were always under the assumption that since Lark was in that county, the county covered that liability insurance portion. So the other thing that was done as far back as 2004 was that there was an agreement between the city and the county that Lark would pay 9% of the total invoice for property insurance through War from the county. That was never memorialized. And the result of that was that ever since at least 2005, that amount in the Lark budget, which has increased, you know, when I started, it was in the $1,500 range. Now it's about $6,700 just because of increases. But it was never memorialized that, that, that 9% would be an actual amount taken out of the 80-20 split. So over the course of the last six months, I worked with both Jackie at the county as well as Jennifer Wade at the city to make some small changes to the Lark operating agreement. That would A, memorialize that 9% amount. B, take it out of the 80-20 split. So the bill that the county pays to War, for example, $200,000. If the county is paying 20% of that split in the Lark budget, then you don't get that full 9%. So the changes take that out of the 80-20 split. And then the change, the last change also memorializes that in the event of damage to Lark equipment. Because of a malfunction in the building, earthquake, something like that, another flood, that Lark would file that insurance claim through the county's War of Insurance. So all of those changes are on page four and six there. Number one, and B, that just memorialized that Mark is going to pay that 9%, and it's not going to be in the 80-20 split. And then if there's failures, you know, that result in damaged Lark equipment, which is paid 80-20 by the city and the county, then that claim will be paid through the county's War of Insurance. And with that, I answer any question.
Commissioners, any questions for?
Just had a comment. And that is that I, I appreciate going through and memorializing sort of handshake things. Not that anything's different per se. I mean, it's, it has some affectionate differences, but I, I mean, this is, I've been a commissioner for a while and this is something that I didn't know was, was not memorialized. Does that make sense? And of course, it all works until something happens and then, then it doesn't work.
So I mean, one of the reasons that, that I felt is important to do this is that when each year during the budget cycle, when I, when the city approved the large budget and I would then give that to Jackie, I was pulling that, that War liability insurance out of the 80-20 split. As it was never memorialized in an agreement, our finance department was not. So you were paying 20% of that, that $6,700 and then presenting an invoice to the city for $6,700. And so we're getting a full 6,700. So it was important for me to get that, that last little piece taken care of in the Lark agreement.
Did you find any other things as you went through it that were just sort of not tidy enough to?
No, we really didn't. The last time that the Lark agreement was adjusted was 2013. And that, that was because back in 2000, sorry, 1998, when the city took back over the operation as a division of the PD, we left in there that Lark was being run by a joint powers board. So from 98 to 13, there truly wasn't a joint powers board. So we made that shift back in 13. So it should be clean and, and good going forward. You sure, everything?
No, just make sure that Albany County Commissioner signing is not Tim Sullivan, you, Miss, Abby.
Yeah.
Gee, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I think working with the city has borne so much fruit recently and we look forward to continuing that work. Thanks to, it's. Sheriff Goffman, do you have any concerns or any thoughts about that? Awesome. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you.
You bet. I entertain a motion for item nine, as presented.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Laramie and Albany County for operational protocols.
Second. Move to second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say goodbye by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all is opposed, same side. That motion carries. Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. Item 10, present for approval, emergency resolution number 2022 dash 016. Resolution declaring partial fire restriction and ban on the use of fireworks. Jack, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Been a dynamic week in, in my office. But this was something that was actually, we started discussions with the National Forest Service, US Forest Service on the 21st of this month regarding, regarding possible fire restrictions on the north end of the county, which would be the, the Forest Service, the Laramie Peak region, and for our purposes, everything north of the fire district, number one line. This, this summers kind of showed that there's two very different weather patterns in our county this year. And the northern part of the county was receiving far less precipitation in that. And the fire science was starting to look critical in the north part of the county. In the south, not so much, which is good. It's convenient for us that we have both a kind of a geographical break and a political break right midway in the county. And the Forest Service does as well. So around the 21st or 22nd, the Forest Service and I decided that, they had decided they were going to go into restrictions on the 26th. I agreed that that timeframe was probably going to work out well for us and we moved forward to do that. It kind of corresponds the, the start that we have up at Sugarloaf was actually on the 25th. So this decision either looks brilliant or like knuckleheads because we missed it by a day. But we were right in line with what's going on. So the restrictions are based on some objective parameters, which are full fuel moisture contents and some other scientific data that we collect out in the field and analyze. Those, those numbers have been kind of going in and out of where restrictions are necessary. And the fire behavior we're seeing on this fire in the north end of the county kind of support that. It's, it got up and went for a little bit and then it lays down and goes for a bit, bit and lays down. And so that's kind of where the data suggests. So the fire restrictions that we're talking about are honestly not all that restrictive in terms of what we do in the county on private lands. And these are again, only on private lands in the county. Forest Service has its own deal. Their restrictions are essentially the same. What it restricts essentially is go up and burning. So we're, we're not going to allow landowners to burn slash piles or ditches or fields at this time. It also restricts the use of fireworks and it restricts the use of incendiary targets for shooting. Those are, those are the key points. A lot of the other things that people do on their day to day life in terms of burning tracks and stuff, it just restricts the time of day that we do that. We try to do that not during the peak operational period. So the restrictions are not all that restrictive. They're more of a heads up. Please don't do something that has a chance of getting away from us. So we've been in restrictions since the 26th at midnight and we'll continually evaluate this in terms of what the fuel conditions look like up there to see if that's necessary. Definitely, or sometime on, on the resolution that shows November 1st as the last date. That is just that if we decide, there's no point between now and then when we decide to come out of restrictions. It just expires.
Thanks, Jackie. Commissioners, any questions? Chad?
For, for clarity. So this, this is the, the area of the county that's outside of fire district number one. So basically the lower half.
Yes. I'll put a map on the website that's fairly clear. Um, I, I know that for the average person that doesn't understand those geographical boundaries, there's a map and then that's pretty clear what that indicates. So it doesn't affect the south end of the county, Minnesota. Down here.
Any other questions? Chad, thank you so much. I entertain a motion for Friday.
I move that we have provided, just presented.
Second. Move to second, any further discussion?
I'm curious if, can you give us a quick update on that fight?
I would be more than happy to.
Is that okay?
Sure. I didn't want to jump right in there, but I'm super happy to. So the Sugarloaf Fire is in the Garrett area. It is all on national forest. As of this morning, it was a little over 550 acres. The northern portion of that fire is showing containment at this time. And there, I, I, my feeling is in the next 24 hours, we're going to have containment lines on the east and wrap in the corner to the south. We're in pretty important discussions about what we're going to do around the west and south. We have pretty important discussions going on today about what we're going to do with the east end of this fire. It's too rugged and too difficult to attack that directly and put a fire line directly on the fire's edge. However, there's minimal fire activity on that portion of the fire. And we're doing some strategic suppression activities with some highly skilled type one firefighters, hot shot crews going in and getting those areas of heat directly. We're using infrared technology where we can do real time infrared with unmanned aerial systems to identify heat on the ground, direct troops in to clean up that small amount of mess. So the next 24 hours are going to show what that looks like. And we have, I feel like in the next, we're in really good shape on this fire. I tell people on the fire and otherwise that it's been a long time in Albany County since we've had a fire that looked this good at this stage of the game. So very optimistic about where we're going with this thing. I don't feel that unless something gets, you know, the weather pattern changes a lot, things get really radical that we're even going to impact private lands at all. So no, no structures at direct threat right now, no private lands direct threat.
And Chad, you haven't had to evacuate any of the, the.
We did an evacuation on the Bear Creek Road the first night during the initial attack stages of this incident. And we've kind of kept that in effect. It doesn't affect very many people at all. And for those that affected, very few of them, if none of them actually evacuated. I would say there's three to five people that have a permanent residence within the evacuation area and they're all remaining there. And they're in a pretty good place. The evacuation was just based on, it was, it was ripping pretty good on that first night. And we thought maybe it was going to push down to the east into that Bear Creek and where there are some residents and stuff like that. There is a partial, there's kind of a soft closure on the Bear Creek Road right now. That's, we're using that primarily because there is so much fire, or firefighter activity in that area. We've got a lot of engines and troops and things like that in there that if we can, if we can keep people from traveling that road, it helps us out in doing our operations, not having to go around horse trailers and stuff like that. So that, that's kind of where we stand right now. I think, you know, I'll discuss with the team if they feel that evacuation is still necessary. I think it probably is. It's more of just a heads up. We really like people to kind of stay out of there for a little bit while we're doing our thing.
I have one more question. What is the definition of containment? Is it a certain distance of cold from the edge of the?
That it's, it, that's somewhat subjective. The, the incident managers on the ground will determine that a line is, they feel that there is essentially no chance of escape from that line at that point. And they're going to call that contained. It's not 100% chance of no escape at that time, but a high level of confidence that we escaped. We are on side of caution with that sort of thing. So when you, when you see black line on the map, it usually means the fire's not going to happen. Pretty careful about that. And so that's why you've seen the containment numbers only creep up teeny bits where I think we had 10% or 20%. Really hesitant to put that black line on the map until we're relatively sure that we're in good shape. So again, the east side of the fire likely will not have containment when this incident management team leaves. It won't show containment. However, we're going to have a pretty high level of confidence that even without there being a black line on the map, which we can't really draw unless we put a direct line there. We're, we're still going to be fairly confident that escape is not likely.
But it's, it's dependent on weather and terrain.
It is, right. And we can, we, you know, like I said, we can look at IR and use our technology as well as the troops to identify whether there's heat anywhere near that. On the north end, there is really no heat anywhere near that line right now. And that's confirmed with, with technology and with troops on the grounds.
Just from yesterday, you have a fire line east of the fire, a ways out with water and all that stuff. So.
We do. So there is, and I don't want to call it contingency because it was the plan from, from the get go is we have a, a large line that's both construction with dozer line and hand line. It goes down the east side of the fire and hooks under the south and over to the, the James on the west side. That is a line that we've constructed in the event that that fire does decide to get up and run. We can take suppression action off of that line, which would likely look like a burning operation. It's something that no one's a real big fan of that plan, but that plan is in place and ready to pull the trigger. It's a, a break in case it gets rowdy sort of thing. So we don't, we don't feel that we're going to end up using, utilizing that option, but it is there for us. Try to come up with several options whenever we do this type of thing. So we're not tied to one plan.
Thanks so much, Chad. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Item 11, present for approval, design build request for qualifications to direct clerk to post. I thought we did.
Yes.
Clerk to post to request CDN and advertise project, the Albany County Board of County Commissioners Meeting Room. Jake, good morning.
Good morning, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you. So this is for the, it's a request for qualifications for the, to obtain or to get under contract, a design build contractor firm to put together a schematic and then design and build the remodel of the Commissioner's room. And we're slated to, in the RFQ on August 6th and, or I'm sorry, September 6th. And then final completion of it will be, right now it's February 28th of next year. Hopefully we can get that done a little bit sooner, but given the state of the world and supply issues, I've talked to some contractors and they said it would be a little tight to get any sooner than that. So that is where we're at.
Thank you, Jake. Commissioners, any questions? So just kind of an overview for those sitting in the room and online, maybe with the closet there behind this would be removed. Hopefully this dais would be reoriented to a more useful part of the room. So but right here, and then there would be more seating and maybe some technological stuff, TVs and that type of stuff, having the table. So we could put more people in here and it'd be a more useful space. So that's just what's being proposed. Commissioners, any questions for Jake?
I'm sure you're going to miss those tan lines in the carpet, the walls that were there once, kind of sentimentally attached.
We'll send it to your house.
Set them up.
I entertain a motion for item 11, please.
I move that we approve item 11 and ask people.
Move to second, any further discussion?
I could use it for my man cave.
Right? Yeah, if you like. And we could put people, Rice and Henri, or Peaches and Herb reunited once it came to your. Yeah, dear man cave. Move to second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, say goodbye by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all is opposed, same side. That motion carries. Item 12, ratify, ratify applications to the Albany Department of Transportation for the American Rescue Act funds to fund the purchase of numerous radios for Albany County Fire Districts, Albany County Sheriff's Office, Albany County Search and Rescue and Albany County Emergency Management in the amount of 150,700. and Albany County Emergency Management in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty one dollars, twenty one cents.
Steph is not here today. She's at a FEMA training, so she opposite bill in for her. And we did um apply for this funding already. We also applied for radios with our SHSP funding. We did receive that grant um in the amount of about sixty seven thousand dollars. So this grant, we decided to ask for the remaining radios that was on the list, which totals one hundred and fifty thousand. Um, it's about fifty radios that we're asking for. Um, and I guess at this point, we just hope we get it. It looks, it's coming down from Y dot ARPA or the state's ARPA funding, so it should be a pretty easy process with them, but we'll just see.
Commissioners, any questions for Bailey? Second, moving second, any further discussion? Thank you, Bailey, and we'll keep with you here for a minute or two. Thirteen, present for approval, sub recipient agreements between the Albany County Commissioners and the Cathedral Home in the amount of five hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty six dollars and Hospice of Laramie in the amount of sixty four thousand, eight hundred and sixty six dollars and eighty eight cents for American Rescue Plan Act grant funding. CFDK number two, one point zero two seven for nonprofit project applications. Bailey, please.
So these agreements are for um the last nonprofits that contested um that you guys had actually approved at your last meeting.
Commissioners, any questions for Bailey? Entertained emotion for item thirteen then, please.
I move that we approve item thirteen as presented.
Moving second and a further discussion. Motion carries. Item fourteen, discuss possible energy performance contract lighting project.
So um as you may or may not remember, we put in a grant with the Wyoming, Wyoming Energy Authority um at the fairgrounds this year for a lighting project. Those grants only go up to about twenty five thousand dollars. While I was out there doing the site visit with our partner, he brought this opportunity up to me. Um, and I think it's something that we should consider. I've brought it up to Jennifer already. We've discussed the information that I have, which is not a lot at this point. Um, but I wanted to bring it to you before I ask more information. Um, what it is, it's not a grant, it's more a loan program. Um, it's a big loan program. So there's, I told um Mr. Daniels at the state that eventually we want to replace all the lighting in all the buildings. Um, we have a courthouse detention center, et cetera. Um, and he said that sounds like something this could work with. He's like, but you know what? We want bigger. So he, he was, his thought was maybe to partner with the city as well. I don't know what the city has done, if they've even done any of their lighting. Um, but it is a possibility. What this would basically do is it conducts an energy audit. Uh, we then find um a lender basically to pay for the retrofit, then the savings from that should pay off the loan. I do not, these are really the details that I know. Um, but I thought this is an opportunity that we should at least have you guys discuss, possibly take advantage of, or just look into more. And if we decide that it's not for us, then it's not for us. Um, but Jenna, I met with Jennifer and she thought we should put it on your, as Jennifer today.
And Bailey, have you reached out to the city?
I have not reached out to the city. The only person I've talked about this is Jennifer and I mentioned to Jack.
And my thought for Bailey was it's a huge project to undertake. So if the board is not looking to do something that requires that level of commitment with the loan and a repayment over an extended period of time, all of those things, then it's not worth her looking into further. Um, but if you were gonna, if it was something you were interested in, then we can go and start asking the other questions of the city and getting more information to give you an actual information about what it would look like and then a decision could be made when it went forward.
Yeah, I don't mean to speak for the board, but I really do appreciate this opportunity and I am total favor of this, right? Wasting money is not something any commission or council should do. And if we can save money by improving the lighting, in the same time this was done at my clinic, not only do we save money, but we have better lighting uh for people. And so um it's super useful. Um, and so I am in favor of it and I'd be more than happy to work with my group of counselors on our intergovernmental small group uh to bring this and see where they are with with lighting at the city and if they're amenable to this.
I agree. I think that, so what's interesting is that we've done some energy retrofits sort of piecemeal. And so you know, lights that make heat are not good. LEDs are, you know, and they can be any amount of warmth. It's better lighting and way less expensive to operate. So the question, I guess, is can we do the audit? I mean, with the city, right? Because we, it seems like the decision to proceed would have everything to do with um how much has been done already. Like if the WA wants to go big and we're as organizations, seventy percent of the way there, I just don't know.
Yeah, and there's, there are more questions. I don't know. Uh, Mr. Daniels, when I was talking to him, he said this has been done in Wyoming before. It has not been done since twenty sixteen. This is a project he would like to see back up and running. And he thinks Albany County might be the place to start that. Um, so he would hold our hand through the whole process, even though it's not a grant and it's not really directly under him. He would be there to help us out, which I thought was very nice of him. Um, the, um, you are right, we have done some energy stuff in the past. Uh, we did the Roden Bridge shop a couple of years ago. Um, the library and fairgrounds were four years ago um for pieces there. But again, these grants are like getting us twenty five thousand dollars at a time and to kind of just be lump this all up into one. Um, but yeah, I mean, like Jennifer, or yeah, like Jennifer said, is I didn't want to dig into it unless you guys were on board with it. Or at least me looking into it at this point. And if something comes up that we're not on board with, we can lock out, but um, at least at this point, that just gives me the go ahead to get more details for you guys.
Well, it would sure be nice to do it once and for all rather than piecemeal.
And this building I had mentioned to him could be an issue because it is a store. Um, but the rest of the buildings he didn't see would be too much of an issue. Uh, we would just have to get Shigal involved. Okay.
Thank you so much, Bailey. When you're asking questions, would you ask if we can hold it out for folks, so regular people in the, in the community? Um, if you want a big project, let's make it a big project.
It cannot be residential.
Cannot be residential. Okay, how about like school districts, they might have that?
Possibly, yeah, I could ask about that.
And I'm some more hospitals, some of the big energy um places, University of Wyoming. That would be a wonderful start of collaboration.
I don't know what their power bills is. I don't know. I don't know if the runway lights or LEDs are in. You know.
Thank you, Bailey.
And then the terms of payment would matter, right?
Right.
If it becomes a, a burden on the budget more than the savings, then that's something we have to be about.
Yeah, and I, and again, this was initial, I have seriously like a quick paragraph of information of what I discussed with him. But as Jennifer and I talked, you don't want to look into it and waste time. Yeah, because you know, I have so much time right now. So, but no, I will get more details for you guys.
Thanks, baby, for everything this morning. Appreciate it. Item fifteen, present for approval, FAA Airport Improvement KIP Grant Part One for the purpose of expanding this noble removal equipment building, phase one design in the amount not to exceed two hundred and forty two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for a period of four years from the date of acceptance. I guess uh there's more um snow removal equipment out at the airport now uh in compliance um with the FAA requirements. Uh, it doesn't have a home. And so they're going to extend onto a building um south of the airport terminal to give these new piece of equipment. And there's an FAA uh grant application, a new package for that. Beyond that, I'm not sure. Do you have any other information?
I, yeah, I think that um Amy, when she was speaking to us about this the other day, she said that part of the grant to obtain the equipment requires it to be stored indoors. So we really need to get indoor storage for it, or we might be paying back the grant for the equipment.
Correct.
Or they might, right? Anyway, yeah. Does that sound right to you?
Yep. Yep. Any other questions? I entertain a motion for fifteen.
I move that we approve item fifteen as presented.
Moving second and a further discussion. That motion carries. Item sixteen, present for consideration, the Taylor Zoning Change Application, LUC dash zero six dash two two. Joe, good morning.
Morning Commissioners. All right, so the applicant is Stephen Taylor, located at one fourteen North Street Road. His request is to change uh zoning from agricultural to rural residential. Uh, current use is residential. There's two dwellings uh currently on the property. Access uh can be off of Hornsby Road or Paragon Lane. Um, project description, the applicant requesting a zoning change from ag to rural residential to be able to subsidize the property into a two lot subdivision. Uh, there were some reviews received. Uh, the assessor's office, Chelsea Matthews had no concerns. Uh, fire department, Lou Cockens had no concerns, Roden Bridge. Um, Rob Fisher um had no concerns, but our professional license will be required to access County Road forty three Hornsby Road for development. Um, the applicable sections of the Albany County zoning resolution are chapter three, section five and chapter five, section five. Uh, findings necessary for approval pursuant to Albany County's own resolution, chapter three, section five F. The Board of County Commissioners must make the following findings. The applicant has provided the required site plan in our survey. The proposed zoning change generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan, including but not limited to the long range growth plan and the priority growth areas. Um, the attorney's office has comments about that one. The applicant has adequately addressed the following impacts and pursuant to chapter five, section five of the Albany County zoning resolution. The applicant has provided the required notice by posted signed publication and certified mailing. Staff analysis, the applicant has addressed the potential impacts the zoning change may cause and has provided a complete application. This property is currently zoned agricultural and a change to rural residential is compatible with existing land use of surrounding properties. Planning department feels that the um that a rural residential zoning in between ag and small lot would be a good transition. The applicant wants to create a two lot subdivision, which will require a subdivision application. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval and applicant responses referenced in this report are adopted as findings reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts and same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding and it works with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Staff recommendation was to approve the Taylor zoning change application, LUC zero six due to adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings effect and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report and the planning and zoning commission unanimously recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the Taylor zoning change application. LUC zero six two two, adopting and incorporating staff analysis findings effect and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for item sixteen then, please.
I move that we approve um the Taylor zoning change application, LUC zero six two two. Incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law as detailed and outlined in the staff report.
Moving second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all is a favor, signify by saying aye, please. That motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Are you gonna handle the next one too?
Yep.
Awesome. Item seventeen, present for consideration, the Brown Paw zoning change application, LUC dash zero seven dash two two.
All right, the applicant is Brown Paw LLC located at ninety Revant Street. Uh, their request is to change zoning from small hour residential to commercial. Current use is vacant. Access can be off of Revant Street. And their project description is the applicant is requesting a zoning change from small to residential. A small lot residential to commercial to be able to put a duplex on the parcel. There were some reviews. Uh, the assessor's office, Chelsea Matthews had no concerns. Uh, Karen Bowman also had no concerns. County engineer Jake Schneider had no concerns. Um, Roden Bridge, Rob Fisher says that Revant and Fort Beaufort are not dedicated county roads and are not the responsibility of the Roden Bridge Department to maintain. Uh, the conservation district, Holly Dyer, research specialist, had comments regarding soils, vegetation, winter erosion and weed encroachment. Uh, full comments can be seen in the review section. Y dot Taylor report uh had no concerns. The applicable sections of the Albany County zoning resolution are chapter three, section five and chapter five, section five. Findings necessary for approval pursuant to the Albany County zoning resolution. Chapter three, section five F, the Board of County Commissioners must make the following findings. The applicant has provided the required site plan to enter survey. The proposed zoning change generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan, including but not limited to the long range growth plan and the priority growth areas. The attorney's office has comments on that. The applicant has adequately addressed all potential impacts and pursuant to chapter five, section five of the Albany County zoning resolution. At the applicant has provided the required notice by posted signed publication and certified mailing. Staff analysis, the applicant has addressed the potential impacts the zoning change may cause and has provided a complete application. This property is currently zoned small or residential and a change to commercial is compatible with existing land use of surrounding properties. The applicant wants to put up a residential duplex on this parcel. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval and applicant responses referenced in this report are adopted as findings reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts and same are incorporated herein. Inclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Staff recommendation is to approve the Brown Paw zoning change application, LUC seven two two. Adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the Brown Paw zoning change application, LUC zero seven two two. Adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and conclusions of law as each are stated in this staff report.
Commissioners, any questions for Joe?
I just have a comment. I know that property and it'll be a great project.
I move that we approve the Brown Paw zoning change application, adopting and incorporating staff analysis. Findings of fact and conclusions of law as stated in the staff report.
Second, moving second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, that all is a favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. Um, item eighteen, review the Albany County Natural Resource Management Plan and set up public hearing. David, good morning.
Morning. So um plans on your last agenda, um or last meeting. Um, we've taken it back and Joe's went through and cleaned up a lot of the, or hopefully all of the errors that were in in the document, um where there's some extra information or um links that weren't working. So it should be a clean document, um but obviously we give it to you to review as well. Um, so if there's anything that we need to change in that regard or anything you guys would like to add, um at this meeting, it was planned that we go forward with a public hearing or set a public hearing, set it up for the public review as well. Um, but it's up to you what we would like to do at this point.
Commissioners, any thoughts? Mr. Richardson? I agree. Um, so um you wanna, we need to set a public hearing, is that correct?
Yeah.
Um, is the next commission meeting? Uh, do we have a public hearing at the next commissioning?
Um, so if we want to do thirty days, I was, I was thinking September sixth.
Okay, is that the first commission meeting?
That, that'll be the first commission meeting of September. So, okay, and that gives us thirty days. I get in the paper Saturday about thirty days notice.
Commissioners, any problem with the sixth of September to put this on the agenda? Okay.
It seems like to me that it could just be in, you know, the public hearings at the beginning of the year. Probably don't have to have its own special thing.
We're right, yeah. It'll just be on your media and we'll do it like you did the applications. It'll be a hearing item as well as an agenda item.
Okay, I do, I think I need, do I need a motion to set up a public hearing? I think I do. You know?
I don't think.
I mean, honestly, it's not required by statute. We've done the, all the process, but um if you'd like to just direct us to to publish and, you know, set a public hearing.
I believe we're set to publish and set a public hearing on September sixth during the Albany County Commission meeting. Okay, thank you, David. And then item nineteen, present for acceptance, petition for vacation of a portion of Maple. item nineteen, present for acceptance petition for vacation of a portion of Maple Avenue and a portion of our own common known as First Street located in section three, County fifteen North Range seventy west Sixth Primary in Fort Denny, Wyoming and a point of viewer. Doesn't appear like a representative for that person requesting that vacation is here. Commissioners, your thoughts? I'm not sure Sue, you are familiar maybe with this petitioner has come before us previously. And withdrew the petition for vacation some years back, maybe two years ago. So, so a little bit of the history.
What I would like to say is that I would, I'd like to push it out until the person is here to represent their position. Yes, we want to just. And it seems like maybe we had sort of a discussion of the process, you know, some years back where we sort of reserved the right and not consider something if the person doesn't show up for its consideration. So.
Yeah, table this.
So maybe if the, if David, if the planning office could direct, you know, could reach back out to the person and ask them to please come. Whenever, and, and then he could put it on the agenda when that person is able to come.
Super. David, is that something you guys can do?
Yeah, yeah, we can absolutely do that. We're not, we haven't been super involved with the vacations, but we would be happy to do that.
Who does that?
It comes to the clerk's office. I'm happy to do that.
Super. Whatever works for her schedule. Sure, we'll be honest. Thank you. So we'll table item nineteen. Item twenty, present for approval contract between the board of commissioners, the county of Albany, Wyoming, filed through the Albany County Community Health Board and Volunteers of America Northern Rockies for gatekeeping services. Jennifer, good morning.
Good morning. So this is the contract for the gatekeeping services that B O A provides for our title twenty-five. Directed outpatient commitment. I didn't think of what it was called for a minute. Directed outpatient commitment program.
Any questions, commissioners? Let her take a motion for item twenty.
Second.
Moving second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll suppose same side. That motion carries. Item twenty-one, present for discussion, R F P for the purchase of two twenty-five kilowatt solar arrays with required electrical permitting for the Albany County Courthouse and Albany County Detention Center with one to be installed on each building.
Go see.
I'll take it and then you, you help me out through this. This was something that I brought to the commission as part of our energy audits that were done in the spring. This is moving us towards less carbon emissions, but also savings. I've had a preliminary, somebody discussed with that, just from Google Maps. What would fit on each building. I've also had a preliminary discussion with Sheriff Applehead about what may or may not be possible. But the person who's done solar arrays said I would need to get up on the building anyway. It's not something that I can do on the ground. Twenty-five kilowatt is the largest solar array that can be put on any entity without Rocky Mountains express uh, Rocky Mountain powers expressed. Ability, allow us to build beyond it. I have had that discussion currently with the Rocky Mountain Power Regional Manager who, we've had a conversation back and forth, not yet heard any discussion of whether fifty kilowatts or something, whatever would fit on the roof would be useful from their perspective. Twenty-five kilowatts would reduce the electric bill here in this building fifteen percent. And nine percent of the detention if that were to be the case. Just to give you a background, that's eight thousand dollars approximately in electric bills between the two buildings every month. So nearly a hundred thousand dollars in electricity is used by these facility. So we think about the lighting that we're discussing, that reduces your energy bill. Solar, this is a, a part of the world. It is an amazing solar producing resource. It's cool and sunny. Those two things are generally don't go together. And of course, it's seven thousand feet here near the sun. So I have solar, just full disclosure on my house and my business and a rental. I have done nothing to the solar on either one of those facilities except clean them off with the screegee every year when there's a dust storm. So they just work. So that's the background and I think Jennifer has a little bit more to help us with on some of the stuff I did not consider.
And sure, is there the possibility of bigger than twenty-five kilowatts?
If Rocky Mountain Power says so, I'm not sure, maybe not on the detention center, but there is other ways to covered parking, which has become a big solar producer. So if can you cover a parking lot with solar covered parking with you? So we'll see. I'd love to, you know, fifteen percent, it would be great to have the building if we were able because of ship oh, to be covered with solar panels, just put them on there.
So.
Just hide them.
I would say.
Pair of it.
I got the email from Pete about doing this and reached out to Bailey and said, do you have any ideas about funding or how do we do that? So between the two of us, we talked a bit and there are, Rocky Mountain Power has a grant. They're, I think it's the Blue Sky Grant. And so, and you had sent Jackie a contact with the guy at Rocky Mountain Power. We have not had a chance. Yeah, I don't believe Jackie has spoken to the Rocky Mountain Power gentleman yet and neither has Bailey.
I'll have to wait till he has called me back.
Yeah, so we'd like to coordinate with him. We have to reach out to Shippo as you mentioned because it's a historical building to figure out if we can put it on the building or I hadn't thought about that covered because I was like, well, I guess we had lawn. We could do something out there. But like covered parking, if there was something we could do, if Shippo says no on the building, if there's covered parking that could go on this side and this side. So I just, we just wanted to get some more detail. Bailey's other concern was if there's additional grant money out there, a lot of times you have to have the grant applied for before you do any kind of contracting or anything. Otherwise, you can't use the grant money for those projects. So.
Can't do the research first.
You can do the research first. You just can't enter into the contracts first. So we'd like to be able to reach out to all of them. Get some more ideas about what we can and can't do and then construct a more comprehensive R F P based off of what we think we can do or what we think we can't do. And we can talk to Rocky Mountain and see if they'd let us do something larger than fifty. If they have ideas about what that could look like, all of those things.
Yeah.
So, and give Bailey a little more time to look to see if there's other grant financing available.
Sure, and in light of what's happened federally and maybe it will happen officially with reconciliation, there probably will be money available for this type of stuff.
That was a hope.
Yeah. Sure, please.
For, for my building, I'd like to explore maybe a larger kilowattage since my detention center, it's on twenty-four hours, three hundred sixty-five days a year. And so even though a twenty-five kilowatt would be nice and it reduced us by about nine percent. I think we might have an ability to do more. So I'd like to explore that option if we could. I'd also like to explore an option for solar panels at the search rescue building as well. So I know that that has a larger energy consumption building. On and out at the search rescue building, we actually have room to put solar panels out in a variety of different functions. Whether that's on the building, arrays, solar panel, or solar panels on ground. For the detention center, we'll need to have architect and contractor of the power company to come and take a look at, see about. Possibly anchoring those on the top of the building. Or possibly on the side of the structure. Most solar panels are facing south. And so in the way our building is set up to get those solar panels to face south, it might be prudent to put it on the side. We also have some wind and lightning and weather considerations in terms of how they anchor that on. Mission line issues as well. Most of our electrical isn't. Isn't mounted on the top of the buildings. Most electricals aren't mounted on top of buildings. In the ground. And so trying to get the transmission line and then also to a lot of construction. So we're definitely in favor of the solar panels. But for the detention center, there's, there's gonna have to be a lot of planning.
Yeah, in fact, the Rocky Mountain Power exec said that they would have to come out and see if the infrastructure could handle a larger array. It was near these two buildings.
I think our infrastructure will be able to handle a larger array than where they put that infrastructure and where they dig their minds. Definitely a topic of conversation, not only for my building, but for this one as well.
Yeah, right. And ultimately, my thought is every building that we own that is conducive to solar panels should have. It just makes financial sense to look.
But as we move, if we move forward with this, R F P, I would like to add the search rescue building on there too. I believe between the detention center and the search and rescue. Our electric consumption is about nine thousand dollars. So, and the type of cost savings are sharing that we can get.
If there's red and the search and rescue evidence, Roden Bridge is right next door. So it almost makes sense to.
Super. Dig the same line.
The more the better. You get economies of scale if you have those people out there. Yeah, right. Yeah.
Yeah, my, my, I'm sure there'll be a lot of study to go into it on this. My concern is the roof on this building. While back, I had a guy come in from, they came to Colorado to determine the condition of our roof. And I have that report and I can make that available to you guys. Maybe things have changed. His biggest concern at the time was somebody put a membrane on this building, like they do a lot of flat roofs. And they didn't take the gravel off of the building. So there's, there's pieces of gravel that are this big rock that are sharp that anytime, like I've, since that time, I, I thought it was weird when I got up there and saw all that rock on top of that membrane. Should have never been there. And he said, same thing. He said, every time you walk on this, because of the sharp edges, you're poking holes in it. And so I'm trying to keep anybody that goes up there to, men on those places where it's kind of cleared off. We, we go on those areas, but if it's wet and cold, you're slipping and falling. And so so the, and I don't know what's on, how much strength it has or whatever to, to build. I don't know how big these things are gonna be. But anyway, I do have concerns on the, on the roof. And in order to put a new membrane down, they'd have to get all the gravel off, which they should have done before they put that membrane on there. His thinking was, and I don't know if that's true, but they might have done it to save money. They might have moved, there was already a gravel car roof up there and they moved the gravel to one side of the building. And then they put the membrane down, they moved the gravel back up, put the other side of the membrane down, and then they spread the gravel out. He said he thought maybe they might have done that as a cost saving thing to maybe, you know, I know Sue wasn't here, but you might have. I don't know if you were here when we talked about this, but they would have had to made a chute or something, but it could have been done with a dumpster. And taking all that gravel off it to begin with instead of making a problem that you're gonna have to deal with further down the line. So my, my concern is the roof. So, you know, whatever happens, I'm sure they'll, people will look into it, but just so you guys know the roof is kind of, we don't, he couldn't even give me a real, I asked him, I said, there's places where I think there are some pinholes already. And so, and we had some drainage problems that I kind of took care of because all the gravel went into the drain on this end of it. So I had to shovel all that out of there. And gravity might have taken a lot of it back down there, but I got most of it cleaned out just with a, a plastic shovel. So I wouldn't get into the membrane. But it does concern me, the, the roof, so.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. And you know how old that was, the, when it was done?
I think it was a remodel, wasn't it, Jackie? Didn't they do the, the membrane at that time?
How long do membrane roofs last? I should know the answer to that.
I don't know.
Because we could be getting to the place where, you know, anytime you put penetrations, like you're gonna mount panels up there and then you have to consider weight and anchor points.
Exactly. You gotta.
Sort of design and if we're gonna do that for.
And if you think the wind's blowing here, get up on that roof. And you'll see the difference that I have, I have same difference from me where I live outside of town, ten miles to here. This, it doesn't get the wind, half the wind. Well, it does, but there's things blocking it. But when you get up here, there's nothing much taller except some buildings over by the university. So it does, it's gonna have some, have to have some strong anchor points. You're gonna have to have a strong roof to hold. Depends on how big it is. You know, if you don't, you grab a sheet of plywood across the yard with, with the wind blowing, you can, you know, and you know what that's like. But anyway, just so you guys know that the roof is, is a something we need to really consider.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. And that'll, that'll be taken into account. Thank you so much, Jennifer. It looks like you have something else.
I was just gonna tell you, Google says flat roofs, if properly membrane roofs, if properly maintained, can last up to fifty years. If, if you would like Chairman Gosar, I'm happy to coordinate with Bailey and Sheriff and Rob and Roy and the Rocky Mountain Power guy and get some more information so that we can bring that all back.
Yeah, if you loop me into that conversation.
Happy to.
I'd like to get my move on this.
Okay.
So, thank you.
You know, it was really interesting. There aren't very many industries that promote the non what they're selling.
Right.
Power utilities have all kinds of grant programs and promotions and energy audits for how not to consume their products. It's kind of interesting.
Yeah. Against the idea of moving it to larger arrays. Just there would have to be some groundwork done in it. So their backbone to these buildings, their infrastructure, if it would handle that, which I'm sure, but they, they just. Awesome. Well, thank you for that. Present for approval, item twenty-two, request to remove and replace sidewalks around the courthouse that are not E E compliant and are dangerous to the amount of sixteen thousand one oh one forbid from C C S Concrete. Roy.
Good morning, commissioners. Okay, let's see, where are we at? Yeah, before you, two different estimates. The first one is, you can see it for the removal or replacement of some sidewalks around the the sidewalks of, it's from the cottonwoods, the roots, the uplift sidewalk around town. Maybe with your residents and maybe here too, but we have, we have some that are dangerously high. I had requested some money when we did the, the S T E T tax back in twenty eighteen. And I don't know what I was thinking about, but I estimated it was like three thousand four hundred and seventy-five. I don't know where I came up with that. I really don't. It's been a long time since then, but I think a lot of part is also that I had had some work done when I started nine years ago, had some work, some sidewalks fixed and I just thought, you know, there was so many of those sections that were done at that time and I kind of applied it to what we, we had at the time when we, when we applied for the, the S T E T tax. The time has made those other, maybe they weren't a problem back then, but they are now, especially on grand. We have some that are this high that are getting dangerous to, to, if somebody didn't see them. And the cost of, of doing work, you know, since that time too. But anyway, so they, they had the the cost to do that was like thirteen minus sixty-five. There's another part that I always thought was really hard to plow and keep clean was a, an area of sidewalk that goes from this parking lot down to the private street between us and the detention center. And when I plow it, it leaves a hump in it that causes more snow and slippage as it thaws and everything else. And I thought, am I asking you to give me a price on that to, to, they'd have to take out like four sections and just make it a gradual thing where it go right into the street and I could keep it clean. Much easier and that's eighteen hundred dollars. The disposal was three sixty-five. So what do you have, you know, you have this estimate, you have the cost on the, the S T E T that I have put out was like three thousand four hundred and seventy-five. So we're kind of short on that. So I don't know if there's any other way that we could and then I'll explain the, the background after this, but. uh, and then I'll explain the, the backlog after this, but if there's any way that, uh, we can come up with some money to get those, uh, fixed, I think it would be, it would not only benefit the, uh, safety and make it ADA compliant and it's sure easier on, on plowing something because my, my wear bars and my, uh, pile on my, on the four wheeler. But maybe that four wheeler, I got it used from the sheriff's office years ago and have made it work until now without having to buy a new one. But when you hit something like that, the plow just falls over the front. I don't know if you've ever plowed with the, with the four wheeler, but it's, it's really hard on you, but it's really hard on the machine. And it just pulls over and the springs pop it back up. But it just, it's not good for machinery. It's not good for anything. So it's something that we're going to have to kind of, uh, face. And I got a estimate from these guys. I tried three, three contractors. Uh, one didn't call me back for a month, um, and then called me back and told me he was too busy. The other one called me back and said, come and take a look at it, but he never did. And so we got these guys and they're local. Uh, they said they could do it in, uh, after August, after the, uh, the primary is over and with a little disruption to, because we got to keep all that in mind as far as doing, going over around the building, I, I think. So.
Commissioners, any questions?
Follow up with the people who didn't show up to give you a, an estimate?
I did not. No. He said he'd be here on a certain day. He never did. He never called me back. One guy that did, um, he was, uh, he was so busy out in West Miami doing, uh, uh, job he's on. It's a big job in West Miami. And he said, he wouldn't get to do it this year anyway. So I think a lot of people are in that boat. It's hard to get materials on a lot of stuff, but then getting somebody, uh, that isn't really busy right now, it's getting harder and harder.
Okay. So I guess it's broken up on the agenda into the sidewalks and then also the layout. So commissioners, your, uh, thoughts about the first one, the, the sidewalk replacement, uh, the ADA ramp and the disposal of that. It says it looks sixteen one oh one is what I have with Roy. And then you have like thirty four hundred dollars or something out of spet. It might have to come out of the commissioner's budget or the building, building contingency, um, which there is money in that. Um, commissioners, any thoughts or against it, I guess? Is, is there any idea that there are, I could look up this morning.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, fairly decent.
Yeah, it's pretty bad. And, and if you look at it, some of them, some of them back nine years ago, when I, when I started, the, they did, they replaced a few of them that were like that. And then the other ones that were only like a little bit high, they ground them down. So if you see, they took a grinder and they ground down the concrete and they did a fairly good job to make it a little bit of a transition, but they're, they've raised up more and they've, they've still continued. When they, when they do that, they'll cut that root right there and it doesn't hurt the tree. It's just that one particular root that's bringing it up. I don't know. It could be the roots. It might, it might be mushrooms. You don't know. Uh, I had a mushroom come up in the east parking lot when I first started. Uh, that thing came up. I, I looked like a volcano coming up. And I, I did some, uh, research on them and, and they can actually crack concrete and leave concrete.
Yeah, I didn't understand it. How much is the twenty-two?
I had a question and that is, so you sort of answered it. How do we prevent the trees from doing it to our replacement concrete, right? What's interesting is if you, if you drive around a, and you take a step back and you look at the cottonwoods, they all lean out over the street, like all of them. And when you go all through the tree area, wherever there's a, a cottonwood like that in the boulevard strip, I'm going to guess it's because they're light and they want to go, you know, because there's no vegetation in the street. There's basically, you could grow towards the center of the street and you're not competing with, with stuff further in towards the property. But then, so basically you have to cut roots that are holding that tree on the, you know, sort of the, the anchor side of it. And it, it just concerns me because I know that as these trees age, they don't, you know, at some point you wind up, they look, you know, the growth ring on the outside is healthy and the, but inside the, in the core of them, you know, that wood can get tired, you know, it can, the, the structural part of the tree can start to rot because it's, you know, the, the ring is a year old, two years, five years, 10 years, but the inside is a hundred.
And if you see, if you see that, you can see that the tree that's marked out here to, to be removed. And the one out here, you'll see, we don't see it. Like you said, you can't see it. You can see at the top because it quits growing on the top. It just grows these little small branches, uh, on the outside that's still healthy, but the main, uh, stuff is all dead and that, that one over there is, you know, going to be removed and that, you can take a look at them and we don't have to be experts at, uh, you know, knowing something like that, we know that's probably not a healthy tree though, you know? And another thing I wanted to point out was that, uh, nine years ago, I had a company Mesa's Concrete came in and they did the ones that they did, they replaced. And they did have to cut them and they, uh, but the ones that they did, I, they, they haven't risen. They're fine. I mean, that's nine years, but I mean, ideally you'd like to, like it to last, you know, twenty, thirty years, but I know the ones that they replaced when I first started have not moved one single bit.
So I have another question. When we remove one, do they come with a stump grinder and just, you know, because it, you can wind up with a void where there was a tree. At some point those roots are going to.
Yep. We've never had.
Decompose and stuff and then you, you know, you sort of have.
We've never had that problem. They've ground, grinded them down pretty good. And I've never had that, but I've seen, you can drive down the street down here and see where some of them have been removed. And I don't know if they didn't grind them properly or nothing, but you got a bush that's grown this high, you know, that's just got.
Sure. That's the new.
Those are little cottonwoods that are growing.
I think you'd want them to, want to grind them below grade and put dirt and saw it over.
This one out here, I just saw where they marked it, gas and electricity right next to it. So I don't know what they're going to do when it comes, they're not going to be able to grind that one down. Uh, maybe they'll do something that they can maybe poison it to fill into it and poison it or something that, because they're, they're not going to be able to grind it, I don't think. Uh, I don't think they've been back since they, uh, since they marked them. And the, uh, the, they were going to wait until the primary was over before they, they did them all anyway. And they had some work being done on a truck that they needed. So, but.
What's the lifespan of these trees? Do we know? Like, are they ninety percent of the way through or are they?
I think that, I don't know what the whole lifespan is, but I didn't know, he was pointing out that big tree out here. It's pretty healthy. It's a different kind of cottonwood.
Then there's some.
There's different kinds of cottonwood throughout the, uh, area. And he said, those are, those will last a lot longer than the ones that we have like along grand here that are, I think everything on grand, they said was kind of reaching its, uh, it's, uh, my lifetime, uh, lifespan. So something we're going to deal with and, and just to make it safer, I think.
I guess my line of questioning is, um, no, if there's an order of operations, we want to do it in the right order. So that we didn't waste money or wind up having to tear something out or have it get damaged later when we deal with trees. But I don't, I don't know what the order of operations is. I mean, maybe you can cut the big, the big stabilizer roots and run the sidewalk through there. It never moves, even if you deal with the trees later as needed. Do you know what I'm saying? I just don't.
Well, there's some that have been taken out already. You can see the squares that are out there. So then we've lost a few already. There's one that's over here that's not even part of the sidewalk and you might've saw a piece that has lifted up so high, it's about that high. And I asked them, just remove that, you know, get rid of that. You know, we don't need that. It, it'll just match some of the other empty squares that we have out there. But I think the whole thing about what we, what we talked about before, as far as getting the trees, a smaller tree like we have along the, uh, city property over here inside the yard. So that when we lose those, at some time we're probably going to lose them. We know we're going to lose them. Sometime they might decide if they ever do widen a street around here, it'll probably be grand, you know, if they ever make it, you know?
And that's something White Dot would have to take care of. Cause I know White Dot took care of a tree in my front yard. They took it down.
Well, that would be good as they did.
Expansion.
Yeah.
We probably.
I think if we had it.
Prudent to not ever plant any trees in the boulevard strip.
No, I, I think you're right. Not to, not to maintain anything in there because if they decide to take it, then you have to stop really, it's not really our property. It's the, uh, the city or the, or the White Dot. And that's kind of why this fall I want to get those trees started. But spring and fall is the best time and, and get those trees in, in the yard itself that are just smaller shade trees like you have that one with their colors. And so it won't look stark if they ever do come in and, you know.
All right, commissioners, I entertain a motion for twenty-two, please.
I approve item twenty-two as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
Hi.
Hi.
I'll close inside. Motion carries.
Can you just add that the, um, part of the funding will come from the SBT tax and the remainder from the building reserve? That way it tracks for the auditors for next fiscal year's audit, please.
My, um, motion, thank you.
The second agree.
Second agrees.
Thank you.
Uh, moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is favor, saying five, saying I, please.
Hi.
Uh, I'll close inside. Motion carries. Item twenty-three, which we kind of discussed, present for approval bid from CCS Concrete to remove curb and gutter and enlarge the exit on the east parking lot to make the exit safer and more accessible for larger vehicles in the amount of fifty-four hundred dollars. Anything to add to that, Roy, that you haven't already?
Well, just that I, I had him while he was here, I had him give me an estimate on that. That's always troubling, that island that you have by years you're going out. Uh, it's always troubling me that they, big trucks come in here, whether you want them in here or not, they're coming in here. Once they get in here, they can't get out. And I've had them stuck in there. They run over those bushes. They've never been healthy because they're always getting that over. I've had them back into a vehicle, uh, out here as well. We bought a really nice trailer to haul the election equipment in. Uh, a couple of years ago, we can't even get it in the parking lot. We can get it in, we can't get it out. So they have to park on the street and haul their election stuff up into the street, back and forth. And I don't know, I just thought I'd get an, uh.
We have a loading dock here.
Right.
You can't get out of it.
It's like, uh, I don't know. But anyway, I thought I'd give them, ask them to give me an estimate. They just take that curb out. You still have that parking spot. You still have that parking spot. You just want to have that island and they just concreted in and, and so it would make it to where you could make that corner, even a large pickup. Chad was here earlier. He said, I, I went into it with my pickup one time and he said, I've never came back into that parking lot again. And it is, it is pretty tight and it's even worse in the winter. It's really a, a pain to try and plow because that curb is so tight that you, no matter how you have your plow, it's going to go off the side of it. So you keep, you're moving, uh, the same snow over and over again, trying to get it out of there. But anyway, I just thought it'd be something to consider. Uh, I don't know if we have the money for it, but certainly, uh, like I said, he can do it between August and, uh, or after the primary and then maybe we'll be able to get, uh, equipment in there, uh, by the general, uh, elections. So, uh, it's still just make it a lot better. We, we can come up with it.
Okay, commissioners, any, first it's building reserve.
Just to comment, um, I'm embarrassed, but I hit that with my bike after a meeting. Let's get that humped out of there.
It is silly as.
Yeah, it is.
So I guess we come out of building reserve probably for this one. Uh, do you need that in the motion?
Yes, please.
I entertain a motion for twenty-three then.
I move that we approve a bid for fifty, um, from CCS Concrete for fifty-four hundred dollars to remove curb and gutter and enlarge the exit on the east parking lot. Paid for out of the building reserve.
Second.
Moving to second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all favor, saying five, saying I, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll close inside. That motion carries. Thanks, Roy.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Twenty-four, present for approval letter to Nancy Bartholomew, Laramie City Clerk to allow Calverman to LLC doing businesses Calverman Steakhouse to apply for a catering permit for a private function at the Laramie Train Depot, six hundred First Street on August sixth, twenty twenty-two from four P M to twelve P M. Twelve P M, the middle of the next day or is that twelve A M?
Twelve A M.
Okay, can we, yeah, let's make that twelve A M. Jackie, please.
Thank you, Chairman Gosar. Commissioners, this is a request to allow a county license to be used within the city. And it requires that, um, notice be given by the Board of County Commissioners, um, authorizing the Calverman to LLC doing businesses Calverman Steakhouse to use their license within the city premises for your consideration.
Okay. I entertain a motion for twenty-four. If you guys have any questions. Big question?
I move that we approve item twenty-four.
Second.
Moving to second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, saying five, saying I, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll close inside. That motion carries. Thank you, Jackie. Twenty-five, acknowledge receipt of the Albany County Statement of Receipts and Expenditures for the preceding twelve months, setting forth the source and amount of all receipts and the purpose of the amount of all expenditures and to be signed by the chairman and the clerk of the board and shall be posted on the county's designated official website in the manner provided in Wyoming State Statute eighteen dash three dash fifty-one six F and published. Jackie, please.
Mister Chairman, Commissioners, as you recall at your July meeting, you requested a statement of receipts and expenditures. I'm happy to report to that within the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, we had a total of fourteen million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents in receipts. And a total of thirteen million, five hundred and twenty thousand, eighty-six dollars and forty cents in expenditures to be reported pursuant to Wyoming Statute eighteen three five one five.
Okay, commissioners, any questions about that? I entertain a motion for twenty-five, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-five as presented.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, saying five, saying I, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll close inside. That motion carries. Present for approval, item twenty-six, University of Wyoming Cooperative Education Agreement between the University of Wyoming, Bay W Whitney School of Nursing, College of Health Sciences and Albany County Public Health. Kim, good morning.
Good morning. Um, so this is just our standard contract with the University of Wyoming to allow the nursing students to come over to public health and do a rotation there and then any of our like flu clinics to help out if they are available.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for twenty-six then, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-six.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, saying five, saying I, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll close inside. Motion carries. Thanks, Kim. That's a great program.
It is. Considering three of our five got their nursing degree there, we all think it's very important to give back.
Right. There's a certain amount of shots in the arm those people don't have to do or get to do before they graduate.
Exactly.
Yeah. Flu clinics are a perfect place to satisfy that requirement. Twenty-seven, ratify real property lease number eight dash zero nine seven six nine between Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany and the State of Wyoming, Department of Administration and Information General Services Division regarding the WIC offices.
So this is the license or the lease, I'm sorry, for the WIC offices there in the public health building with the state.
Okay. Any questions, um, commissioners about that lease? I entertain a motion for item twenty-seven, if there are no questions.
I move that we approve item twenty-seven as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, saying five, say, hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll close inside. That motion carries. Item twenty-eight, present for approval agreement among Wyoming Department of Health, Public Health Division, Albany County WIC Program and Albany County to set forth the responsibilities of the agency, the local WIC agency and the county in providing program benefits of the United States Department of Agriculture Food and Nutrition Services, USDA slash FNS, special supplement nutritional program for WIC from July first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two in an amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Kristen, anything to add to that for us?
No, there's really nothing new. I mean, the WIC program fully reimburses the county. The county's just a fiscal flow through. Um, but the county is now receiving a admin fee. So the grant is paying the county five percent of the salary and budget now.
Commissioners, any other questions? In a motion for. In a motion for twenty-eight then, please.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
I'll close inside. Item twenty-nine, award the bid for the Albany County Road Striking Project to SNL Construction in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Rob, great color, share it.
I recommend, we're just teaching now. More yours, thanks. Good morning, Commissioners. This is a a bid, awarding a bid for seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents for the striping of all our paved roads. They haven't been done since I believe it was two thousand seventeen, so if you've been out on them, you've kind of noticed that the paint's fading quite a bit.
Commissioners, any questions for Rob? This will be the award and the next one will be the contract.
And the completion date on this is August thirty-first, so basically I'm in August to do it.
Okay.
I move that we award the bid for the Albany County Road Striking Project to SNL Construction in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
I'll close inside. That motion carries. Item thirty, present for approval contract between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County and SNL Construction for the Albany County Road Striking Project in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Basically the contract.
Any other questions concerned about the contract? I entertain a motion for item thirty, please.
I move that we approve item thirty as presented.
Second.
Moving in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
I'll close inside. That motion carries. Item thirty-one, award the bid for the Dutton Creek Cattle Guard Replacement Project to Hammacher Exploration in the amount of three hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents. Rob?
If any of you have been across Dutton Creek and these three cattle guards, they've steadily been getting, getting worse, so we're looking forward to getting that project done. And Hammer, J D Hammacher Construction had the low bid on it, completion date of October first.
Those are like, it's like they're sinking.
Yeah.
They're below grade.
And every time you get that shock, it just keeps getting more and more shock. Looking forward to getting that done. It's been something that's been on our list for probably four years now anyways.
Commissioners, any other questions? I entertain a motion for thirty-one, please.
I move that we award the bid for the Dutton Creek Road Cattle Guard Replacement Project to Hammacher Exploration in the amount of three hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
Moving in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
I'll close inside. That motion carries. Item thirty-two, present for approval to contract between the Board of Commissioners of Albany County and Hammacher Exploration for the Dutton Creek Road Cattle Guard Replacement Project in the amount of three oh four eight sixty-five point one five. Rob, anything to add to that contract? Any questions, Commissioners?
Do they, do they make, how do they do those? Are they like a precast? Do they set, you know, precast concrete engineering, like they tear out the old one?
Right, and then, and then they'll have to make sure the grounds packed in well enough to Jake can answer the, the design factors a little better than I can, but yeah, so they won't move and and we're using a lot heavier duty cattle guards. Really should have been done the first time, but that was back in two thousand and ten or something like that.
So they don't pour them in place? I know it was just, it was just a curiosity.
I believe the contract will bring in the forms.
Perfect.
Okay. I entertain a motion for thirty-two then.
I move that we approve item thirty-two as presented.
Second.
Moving in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
I'll close inside. That motion carries. Thanks, Rob, appreciated. Item thirty-two A, removal, I guess removal is the word, of the library H R M O U.
Exactly. So this letter is from Christina with her leaving the library board met and they also would like to terminate their M O U.
And I just wanted to add, they felt that the services that Christina had been doing, they have learned them well enough now that there is a need to continue the H R services, it wasn't so much that Christine was leaving, it's that they just didn't feel like that was something they needed.
Okay. And they had modified last year, I believe, or early this spring, and we removed the payroll services that Christina was doing and then this is that next progression of.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion for thirty-two A then, please.
I move that we approve the cancellation of H R contract with Albany County Public Library.
Second.
Moving in second, any further discussion? I'm just hoping to add one piece to some of this was a result of processes that end up costing this Board of Commission, not only the library but other places, some money and some extra time and efforts. And so I would probably be bringing to you guys a discussion about mid-year audits or some sort of audit committee for those outside entities so that we can keep the praise where budgets are, where meetings are, where human resources are. So we're not surprised at the end of a year or at the end of two years or three years. And that we have everything we need for statutory from those, those boards. Moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
I'll close inside. That motion carries. Item thirty-three, approve the vouchers for August twenty twenty-two. I entertain a motion for that.
I move that we approve the vouchers for August twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Moving in second, any further discussion?
Hey, wait a second, are we approving them for July? So it's August.
Chairman, I'm Mr. Commissioner Richardson, you are correct, thank you.
Let me try this. I want to amend my motion to state that I move that we approve vouchers for August, I mean for July of twenty twenty-two.
The second agree?
Uh, yes.
It's the movement second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll close inside. That motion carries. Item thirty-four, executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A triple I. Are you guys ready to do that? I entertain a motion for that, please.
I move that we exit regular session and enter into executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen four four oh five eight three.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? That motion carries, leaving regular session. Entering executive session at eleven oh eight.